Thank you for joining us this afternoon for the September sixteenth, twenty twenty five Montessorino Special City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For today's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the Special City Council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and be able to speak to the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen if not provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be provided by the poll.
Thank you very much. I would like to call this special meeting as a city council to order, and we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Shannon?
Here.
Councilmember Micah Chapp?
Present.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Here.
And Mayor Craig?
Here. So, we will commence with item number one, which is going to be interviewing and then appointing one of our applicants to fill a vacant city council seat. And before we get started, I wanted to go over the procedures for the interview today and how the voting procedure will work. Every one of the candidates has received a list of questions. And from this fully randomized list that I was given, starting with Bob. So, Bob on line?
I'm here.
Okay, great. Hi, Bob. And so, we're going to give the same question to every one of the candidates. And then we'll just cycle through until all seven questions are answered. At that point, there will be a vote amongst the council. It'll be a ranked choice vote to determine the order of the nomination. So, we don't actually vote for who's going to take it. We don't vote on paper as to who gets the position because the council has to have a verbal confirmation to appoint somebody to the city council. So, once the nomination process has been set, then we will take each nomination. There will be somebody who will make a motion to accept that appointment, somebody will second it, and then we will have a vote on it. Does anybody have a question? Would anybody like some water before we get started?
Yeah.
Yeah?
No.
No? Okay. Yes.
Is there an opportunity for public comment? Where did that fall?
So, after we interview all of the candidates, we will then have a public comment section. And then it will come back to council. Council will further discuss or make any motions that they would like to make. And then we'll have the voting process start right after that. And I saw another hand up?
So?
Oh, you just want water too? Okay. All right. So, Bob, you're up first?
Right.
Bob, oh, you've already had these questions. Let me get the page with questions on it. What do you hope to accomplish while on the council?
Absolutely. So, personally, I am running for council and joining the council due to my interest in supporting Montessorino as the lovely little hamlet that it is. You know, growing up in Saratoga, moving here ten years ago, raising my kids in this area. I've enjoyed the wonderful community feel that we have here in a small town. And I'd like to help further that along, namely by, you know, helping us continue to maintain those strong small-town values, work within the confines of the county, the state, and as well as the federal government to continue to support this small town and the way it's growing, as well as the way it needs to, you know, kind of stay the same a bit. And in order to do that, things that I, you know, find dear or enjoy with my family, I'd like to represent as one of the council members. Things like community promotion and involvement. The desire to give back to the community, you know, has always been something we promote for our children and something I grew up with in the Catholic Church. And then on top of that, you know, just overall kind of understanding how government works and, you know, being a part of that, I think would all be important things for me on the council. So.
Okay. Thank you very much. By the way, is there a time limit?
Yes, I just, it's on the screen. I didn't want to share my screen with a timer. So, that way you guys could see it directly, but I do have a timer happening. Two minutes.
So, just to make sure everybody knows the process, we do have a three-minute time limit to answer the questions. Two minutes, sorry. That's right. We got a lot more. Okay, so next up will be Mark, and after Mark will be Liz. So, Mark, I'll give you the same question.
Do you want me to come up there?
No, you can sit down if you would like, or yeah, it's better to come up here. Yeah, it's good for you to come up so that we can have you on the video.
Do you want me to smile?
Um, what do you hope to accomplish while on the city council?
I don't have an agenda. I've just lived in Montessorino since nineteen ninety-nine. And I would like to participate in the town that I live in. I've seen things going on, and it's a difficult position because we are surrounded by Los Gatos and basically consumed by them. And at the same time, we have to have our own voice. And I think having our own voice within that, within that community, and I don't know how Montessorino works with Los Gatos and how the interface. I know that there was, you know, I know a lot of the issues with the sheriff at one stage. I think it's a very difficult situation. I don't have a prepackaged answer for you. I think being on the council, seeing the issues, and having lived here would hopefully give me the benefit of being able to provide some help and some direction.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And Liz? Hi, Liz.
Hi there.
Hi. So, what do you hope to accomplish while on the city council?
Well, my primary focus is to work with council to finalize our wildfire safety and evacuation routes and procedures for Montessorino and to work with Caltrans in the state to address the dangerous eucalyptus trees on Highway nine that threaten our evacuation of residents. Having lived in Pacific Palisades, seeing the devastation, and knowing the shortcomings that precipitated that disaster, I want to help the city prevent that kind of scenario for our residents in Montessorino. I also hope to protect our beautiful character from the housing density laws that threaten our character as well as the safety of our residents through advocacy, education, and design guidelines. I have previously served on council, and I will bring my experience on council as well as a site and architecture commissioner, as well as my experience running for state assembly to the council. And most importantly, I would bring my passion to serve our community and our residents of Montessorino. I did previously serve on council and have the utmost respect for council member Javet Alahi, and I wish him well. And I hope that I could continue to finish his term. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ken Toren, followed by Genevieve.
Thank you. So, what I intend to do is to advance the strategic plan. And that is to ensure political stability, including transparent communication, building collaborative relationships, practically engaging the community, and preparing for any kind of conflicts, as well as provide leadership and accountability. Also, as part of the plan, to accommodate any state mandated housing requirements while preserving the character of our community and our residents, to strengthen public safety, which I have a lot of experience with, as well as balanced security needs, to enhance emergency preparedness, to be ready for wildfire, earthquake, and other risks, as well as prioritize and foster community engagement, making sure that residents' voices shape our policies and decisions that reflect our immediate needs and long-term goals for Montessorino. I also intend to support financial, good-sound financial management. I understand there's a new IS system for financial and human resources. And so, I intend to make sure that internal controls, financial controls are preserved and serve the community well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Genevieve.
So, in common with Mark, yes, I've also lived here since nineteen ninety-nine, my entire life. And I hope to join the city council and serve the community that's given me so much. I have a few specific goals I'd like to accomplish. I live right near Winchester, one of the bus stops on Winchester. And a lot of times when I'm driving to school in the morning, or when I'm driving just in general in the morning, you'll see kids kind of looking both ways and then booking it across the street. So, I'd love if we could get one or two more crosswalks in there where there are bus stops. And I also think, you know, in light of Palisades and in light of living in California, you know, wildfire safety is so important. I also, for Liz, I did also want to address all those eucalyptus trees on Highway nine. I think they're a real hazard. And also, of course, Montessorino, it's a really attractive place recently for young families. So, I would love to do what I can to help make the city more affordable and more attractive to them.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, that brings us to question two, and Mark will start us off, followed by Liz, Ken, Genevieve, and Bob. So, question number two, a little bit of a long one. Beyond the direct responsibilities within Montessorino City Council, the mayor makes appointments for council members to represent our city's interest on various external boards and commissions, like the Santa Clara County, Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority, Silicon Valley Clean Water, Joint Power Authorities, Santa Clara County Library, et cetera. How do you view the importance of these external appointments for Montessorino? And what is your commitment to actively participating in them if appointed? So, we'll start with Mark. Yes. Quick question. Sure. Did the candidates have these questions beforehand, or are they hearing them now for the first time?
No, the candidates had the questions beforehand.
Okay, okay. So, this is a long question. So, they've had to...
Okay, yeah.
Now, we want you to think on your feet on this. Okay, okay.
The question's also on the podium, so feel free to look it up there.
I think the city council involves being part of other committees. It just comes with the territory. I have some knowledge of, there was somebody I knew in Los Gatos whose husband was on a committee to make safe roads to get to school for kids. I thought that was fantastic. I didn't even know that existed. So, I thought that was really good. Participating in some of these things, I'm happy to participate in them. I just want to know that my knowledge and experience is going to be of value to them. I just don't want to be on something where I don't think I'm of value. I mean, I'm pretty handy. I've built houses before. I'm involved in real estate and houses. So, you know, transportation, yes. I mean, where I live in Montessorino, it has some transportation issues. And although it's made come up as a separate question, you know, that's when I moved in there, there wasn't any lights on Winchester and on Davs. And since then, everything's changed, and there's a lot more traffic going where I live. I was involved with Brian Leventhal, involved in traffic once before, as well as the police chief of Los Gatos, Scott Seaman. So, I was involved in a lot of that, but I'm happy to participate in these things. I think that's just part of being, living in Montessorino.
Okay. Thank you very much. Liz?
Yes, thank you. External appointments to boards and commissions and JPAs are very important, not only in providing our city a voice at the county level, but also in fostering relationships with other cities and elected officials to our benefit. I truly enjoyed previously serving on Valley Water, on the Santa Clara County, Santa Cruz County Airport Roundtable, and my personal favorite, Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority. These are wonderful, wonderful commissions that give us a better understanding of how other agencies in our county work. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Ken.
So, I have experience serving on some county boards and also some state agencies. The San Andreas Regional Center, I was the president of the board there that serves people with developing disabilities, as well as a committee on preparedness and emergency management with county, and also on a COVID-related committee geared for businesses that were involved with offering services during COVID. And I believe that the regional decisions that are made have a bearing on Montessorino, just like any other community in terms of transportation, water, public safety, environmental issues, et cetera. And it's not just symbolic, but it's an opportunity to build partnerships, bring resources back into the Montessorino, and vice versa. And I, you know, I'm a person that shows up, I'm present, I'm prepared, I understand the issues. And as a member of the council, I'll have the best interest of Montessorino residents and the council and the entire community.
Okay. Thank you very much. Genevieve?
Hello. Yes. So, I believe that all these external appointments to the different committees, I think they're very important, especially for a small little place like Montessorino. I had a friend when I was at high school who lived in Morgan Hill, and she would always comment that I was so close to everything, and she was very far away from everything. Because Montessorino, Mosgatos, Campbell, Saratoga, were all very small cities, and we're all very close together. And so, I think really it would be to our strength if we can just stay connected and we can work with each other, and also the larger Bay Area, larger Silicon Valley. I don't personally have any experience serving on those committees, but I would love to be on the wildfire advisory board. I would love to work on fire safety or something like that. I'm also big on public transportation.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Bob?
You're muted.
Bob, you're...
There we go. Agree with all my other candidates as well, who have said the same thing, that Montessorino, being a small town, needs its voice heard. And we need to make sure we're out there, involved with the variety of the committees in Santa Clara County, you know. And I think it's an important thing for me personally, you know, safe routes to schools, the VTA, and making the city more walkable. Always important type of things in my mind for this small town to have. As we get into the fire, you know, prevention stuff, as well as, you know, some of the other issues around housing densities. I know that maybe we can get our voice heard at Santa Clara Counties, you know, some of their committees around this, and try to partner with some of the smaller communities that are, you know, in this grouping that have faced the same issues, the Atherton's, the Woodside, the Portola Valleys, et cetera, where land is scarce, so to speak. So, it'd be good for us to be able to have our voice heard and have people out there representing us at these meetings so they see that we're committed, involved, and, you know, looking to be helpful. So, that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, question number three, and we'll start with Liz, followed by Ken and Genevieve, Bob, and then Mark. Question three is, can you describe the time when you successfully engaged with the community to address a local issue? What was the outcome? So, Liz?
Yes, of course. And well, in twenty seventeen, along with my neighbors on Blanchard Drive, I lobbied the city to repair the potholes on our street. Council then created the Better Streets Commission, to which I was appointed. And since then, the city has upgraded all of our streets as a result through the pavement management program. Just last year, while serving on Better Streets Commission, I was able to work with our commission and our neighbors on the Davs Avenue S curve to successfully install what the residents wanted in terms of speed humps to prevent speeding and accidents on their street. Subsequently, I have aided the residents, the same residents, in discussions with the city to modify installations of signage to the satisfaction of residents. And most recently, in the aftermath of the Palisades and Eaton fires, I came to council and asked council to investigate our evacuation routes, our local services, to determine if any weaknesses exist, including hydrant maintenance, which we consequently found out hydrants had only been maintained every ten years by San Jose Water. We have been actively pursuing myself and other citizens, and of course, members of council, in establishing safe evacuation routes and working with state agencies to address Highway nine concerns. The general plan has pending amendments to this effect. I hope to continue this work as a council member. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ken?
Sure. I currently serve as the regional VP of the Alzheimer Association, but prior to that, I was the CEO of Red Cross in Silicon Valley. And we did a lot of things in the community to prepare for emergencies and risks, related risks. We organized several earthquake preparedness, emergency response, preparedness drills with local service organizations here in the Tunnel, Skates, and the city of Montessorino. We also ran several community blood drives. What I'm most proud of, I think of my career at Red Cross, was during those storms a couple of years ago, we opened up two shelters, one in Campbell and one in San Jose. And a hundred percent of the people there were unhoused. So, we brought people from Los Gatos Creek beds, from San Jose Creek side, with just their, you know, wet tents and clothing and bags. And we served a hundred percent of the people at both those shelters, about four hundred people total were unhoused. Children, older adults, you know, some mental health issues, healthcare, medical condition issues. And what's most significant about that is serving all these people from all these communities is that we set up an arrangement with the city of San Jose to be able to transition those people not back into ten cities, but also to a tiny city operation set up by the city of San Jose. So, we thought, as soon as we opened up the shelter, we thought ahead. And I'm proud. I'm proud I led those efforts for the overall community, in particular for the unhoused community.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Genevieve?
Did anyone here have any children or friends who attended Notre Dame High School in San Jose? Yes? Okay. Yeah. So, it's slightly smaller, very local, very small issue. But when I was a student at Notre Dame, I was a member of the Gay Straight Alliance Club. And there was a student who wanted to bring her girlfriend to a formal event, which was fine, but they both wanted to wear suits and ties, which the school administration was less on board with because we were in all-girls school, we were Catholic, and it was very much skirts and dresses for formal attire. And so, we organized, not a protest, but a movement where the students, in compliance with the uniform, we all started wearing ties for the week. And at the end of the week, me and some other club members, we met with the administration, and we explained our point of view, and we were able to get them to waive the dress and skirt requirement, and the students were able to attend in suits and ties as they wished. So, that's an example of how I engaged with community on a very small scale.
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you. And Bob?
Sure. For me, I've been involved with the community in a variety of ways. I'll pick one where I was part of Davs Avenue School, Home and School Club. And we, kind of coming out of COVID, restarted a bunch of different events around town, including the auction, which is our principal fundraiser, and was able to, you know, go and elicit community support, bring the event back into downtown because it had been held off-site a few different places that either didn't exist anymore or weren't willing to support something like that post-COVID. And so, we were able to bring the event back into downtown, support the schools, as well as, you know, start to drive real community engagement again with the Home and School Club, as well as Los Gatos Education Fund, which is now CLG. And yeah, so that was one of the big things I did. I worked with Liz Lawler on the S-Curve Improvement on the Better Streets Commission a couple of years back as well. So, definitely look forward to doing more of that if I join the city council this coming term. So, thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Mark?
The only thing I've really been involved in is with the traffic, as I had mentioned earlier, working with Scott Seaman and Brian Leventhal. We, I worked on trying to get some traffic calming measures put in. All the traffic for Davs Avenue School was coming down Davs Avenue when I moved into the community. Since then, all the lights and stop signs on Davs have sent traffic down Bruce, down Vista, down Vineland, down Cabin. And I was trying to work with these folks to try and see if there was another way to do it. Nothing really came of it, unfortunately. I'm not quite sure why, but that's the only thing I've really been involved in. I haven't stopped any earthquakes, so.
Okay. Question number four, and we'll start with Ken, followed by Genevieve, Bob, Mark, and Liz. The question four is, would you be open to outside opportunities to expand your knowledge of government operations such as Leadership Los Gatos or other conferences that are available to us?
Yes. I believe in, you know, continuing learning and building connections, I think that's the way, that's one of the ways that you do it with entities like Leadership Los Gatos and other leadership-related things. It would enable me to expand my understanding of government operations, share best practices, strengthen relationships that go both ways, expand my knowledge, and make sure that, you know, that these actions benefit our residents and benefit our city. So, absolutely, I think it would be a terrific honor having involved in those things.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Genevieve?
In my village, Leadership Los Gatos, it's like a ten or twelve-month, like a ten or twelve-month course. You meet once or twice a month. Do I have that correct?
Once a month.
Once a month. Okay. Yes, I would be absolutely willing. I think that would be an amazing opportunity. I was a political science major in college, so that sort of stuff honestly sounds like a field trip to me. I think that would be great. I would love the opportunity to participate.
Okay. Thank you. And Bob?
Yeah, I'm actually signed up for this coming term for Leadership Los Gatos. Thanks to the council for bringing that to my ability. And then, you know, I think other commission conference abilities out there would be important. And making the community aware of them, I think, is also something that would be great. So, keep up the good work on this, and let's, you know, continue to try and be collaborative with everybody in the community to help out on this piece. That's kind of my thoughts on it. But yeah, absolutely agree that we need to continue to push ourselves into the community, as well as, you know, train or learn from best practices of other groups out there. So, thanks.
Okay. And Mark?
I think that being part of the city council requires being part of these organizations. I'm stung. I'm willing to learn. There's probably a lot of things that I don't know that Leadership Los Gatos can show me. So, yeah, I'm eager to learn. I like the responses of the folks that made comments before me. So, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Liz?
Absolutely. I'm always open to and actively seeking to expand my knowledge of government operations, especially through sessions like Leadership Los Gatos and others. I have actually spent time, a lot of time, with Catalyst for Local Control and have lobbied in Sacramento and have gained an in-depth understanding of what goes on, and will continue to do so and take advantage of every opportunity given to me.
Okay. Thank you so much. And now, question number five. We'll start off with Ken, followed by Genevieve, and Bob, and Mark, and Liz. How would you try to strike the balance between a homeowner's desire to improve their property and the community's desire for design standards?
Ooh, now we're getting to the meat of it. Well, I think everything starts with listening. I'm, you know, I'm in a business where there are a lot of constituents that I deal with on a regular basis, both individuals with medical conditions and families and caregivers. And I have to, I have to listen. So, I think it really starts with listening and enabling the homeowners to feel that they're being supported. And that, that I would be very clear to be, to promote transparent guidelines and a process where homeowners understand expectations upfront, and the community can weigh in constructively. So, I think it really is a collaborative, it's all about collaboration and listening. And protecting the beauty and nature of, and the qualities that make this city so wonderful and so beautiful. And enabling them to have their flexibility to enhance their homes, but it all starts with listening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Genevieve?
I believe that there should be some balance in community standards and individuals and what they do with their homes. But I'm also a big believer in no harm, no... But I'm also a big believer in no harm, no foul. And homeownership is such a big deal. It's such a thing that so many people aspire to and not very many people are able to achieve these days. And I think if you're able to have your own house, then as long as you're not hurting anyone, you should really, it should be up to you what you do with it. If you want to have Halloween decorations in your yard all year long, or if you want to paint your house bright purple on the outside. Honestly, as long as you're not hurting anyone and you keep it limited to your property, then if your neighbors have a very deep-feeted issue with the color purple, we can come together and we can try and work it out. But I feel that on the sliding scale, I come down more on the side of you should be able to do what you want with your house.
Okay, thank you. Lavender, always a good compliment. Okay, Mark Valance?
I think that when people want to, when they decide where they want to live, um, I've always told people, you know, go and see who your neighbors are first. I mean, you might like the house, but once you move in, you can't change your neighbors. And things can, things change. You get in and, and what you decide to do and what Genevieve says, I, I, I understand where she's coming from, but, but I think there has to be a fine line. There are different areas of Montesereno that have different requirements and, and different allowances. Um, I think allowing people to do certain things is great, but there has to be boundaries and there's no hard and fast rule to this stuff. I, I, I think you need to look at each case individually, and I think you need to consider where they are. And, and, and of course, the people, and, and we send out notices to people whenever something's going to be done. They get an opportunity to comment. But, you know, it, you know, this is an area of natural beauty. I think that we need to maintain some, some consistency and we can't just do anything we want to do. Um, and this falls in, comes out, the next question or the next down the road, what are you going to do about the, the, the housing issue in the state? That's a really long one, but anyways.
Okay, thanks, Mark. And Liz?
Well, I've had, uh, experience on the council and as a site and architecture commissioner in addressing the interesting dynamics between neighbors, um, with respect to home building. Uh, we, I've presided over some difficult land use decisions. Um, for me, it's most important that not only do our residents exercise the right to enjoy and build homes on their property, but that the neighbors are engaged and that their concerns are validated and addressed in a mutually capable, acceptable manner. And we have successfully, I have successfully, over the last several years, been able to do that. And most neighbors are very amenable. Um, but it is a matter of listening to their concerns, which are primarily about privacy. Uh, there are design concerns, however, as long as they're, they fit objective standards and they mo, and, and most people do follow those guidelines. But all in all, it's just very important to make sure that the residents, the neighbors come together and mutually find a solution.
Okay, thank you so much. So that brings us to question six. What are the top one, two, or, I'm sorry, were you done, Liz? I'm sorry.
No, it is me. I, I think I didn't get a chance to answer that one.
I skipped over you, Bob. I'm so sorry.
Hard to find me on the phone. Um, yeah, likewise to, uh, council candidates were saying, I do think that everybody has their own right to what they want to do with their property, but as a town or city, we also need to put some guidelines out there and put a process in place to help guide them, uh, you know, around some of that. I think the Site and Architecture Committee does a, a great job. And now that I'm a part of that, I'm looking forward to working on some of these, uh, contentious issues to help, uh, settle some of that. But, you know, I think the biggest thing is, you know, it's come out in a few people's responses as well, is communication. We all live here together. We all have to see each other on a daily basis and work with each other, live with each other, et cetera. And, uh, you know, being able to communicate together, um, you know, is a huge thing and it's important. And as such, it's what builds a town, a city and makes it what it is. And I think Montesereno has a lot of great qualities that way. I know the block I live on throws a couple seasonal parties every year and we all get together and talk about the issues facing us, you know, both personally as well as in the town. And I think it'd be good, um, way to resolve a lot of some of these differences, if there are any, regarding people's desire to paint their home lavender or something else, that we could, uh, open lines of communication and help the community and the homeowner come to a mutual understanding. Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you so much. So now we're on question six. What are the top one, two, or three issues you believe our city needs to address? And how would you propose we tackle them? And we'll start with Genevieve, followed by Bob, Mark, and Liz, and then Ken.
So some of the top issues that I feel our city, um, could do with addressing, one of them is I've noticed a increase in, um, homeless individuals since I was very young. So I think that's a issue that we could work jointly with Los Cados to address, just as it's a city, it's a problem that cities everywhere in California are experiencing. And it just keeps going up. So I think that's something that we could get ahead of before it becomes anything too drastic of an issue. I also think that we could do with, with making a, uh, third space for schoolchildren. Um, the Los Cados Youth Recreation Center, they offer a bunch of classes in theory, but if you go on the calendar and you try and check, a lot of them aren't, they don't have teachers up for that. They don't have, um, a calendar or the classes was also offered in twenty twenty-three and it's still on the website. So I think if we could find a way to make a space for school-age kids to sort of come together and build a sense of community while they're young, I think that would be great. And then also, just to circle back to it again, I think additional crosswalks on Winchester, just because there's really one that way, and then the next one's like two miles in the other direction. I think additional crosswalks, it seems like a small issue, but I think it would make a really big difference.
Thank you so much. And Bob?
Absolutely. I think, uh, wildfire preparation is probably one of the biggest things that we face here in a location that we have, such as Montesereno, um, you know, and being prepared for it, advising our, you know, town members and constituents as to how to be prepared for and how to take actions regarding, um, potential of fire danger is always a, a good thing. And I think, you know, we do a pretty good job of that involving the Santa Clara County Fire Department as well as other things on our website and seminars that we've posted in the past. Um, on top of that, I think, you know, looking at financial, um, preparedness and financial solvency of, of the town is important. And, you know, coming from a background of, you know, treasurer, accountant, things like that, I would definitely, uh, wade into those waters and, and try and, uh, make sure that we are, you know, good to go, and so to speak, in that regard, um, looking at the financial, uh, future of Montesereno. And then, thirdly, I think safety is always a concern and an issue. We've had some recent break-ins and issues around town. I know we've now adopted the flock cameras and I think that was pretty well received by a lot of people in town, um, regarding this. And hopefully they, uh, proved to fruition to help reduce the amount of, uh, crime that potentially, uh, afflicts a small town or, you know, profitable or affluent towns such as ourselves. Um, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Um, I would have to, um, second what Bob said in terms of, uh, crime. I think I've noticed some of these, uh, solar cameras, uh, going up in the neighborhood. I think that's great. As a neighbor of mine, just like four or five houses down from me who got, who got raided, uh, they were in and out in five minutes. And it's not something you expect in Montesereno. So I think if we can do something to, uh, assuage the concerns of the people, uh, in our small town, I think that would be great. Traffic has always been on my, on my radar. I think that, you know, expanding, expanding neighborhoods, um, you know, in the, uh, the, the forty, uh, area up there, I mean, they built more houses, but I'm not sure that people are taking into consideration that those houses are going to have families with children. That's going to impact our schools. So I think that that's something that needs to be looked at. I think you can't just keep funneling more children into more schools. It has to be, I don't have an answer for it, but I think that this, that's definitely a concern because that has, then there's more traffic and, you know. So those are really the only things I think there's to learn.
Okay, thank you. And Liz?
Hi, yes, you know, the, the top issues I believe our city must address right away, obviously, first of all, is wildfire evacuation safety. And we can do that by continuing to work with Caltrans and state agencies and potentially even getting federal assistance in, uh, in, in removing and/or replacing the, uh, explosive eucalyptus on Highway Nine. I know that we're looking into when we got the scenic highway designation and whether or not those trees were planted before or after. I know Caltrans is giving us quite a bit of a time in terms of removing these trees. Uh, also, I think, of course, we all agree that preserving our, uh, community character is paramount. We all know what we love about our, our rural community. And the housing laws that Sacramento continues to pass makes it increasingly difficult and challenging to preserve that. And so being proactive and, and working within our objective standards and our building codes, finding ways to preserve our way of life, our, our, the way our community looks and feels, our privacy and enjoyment of our property. It's all very important, and especially in the face of SB seventy-nine, which was just passed, but narrowly, we have an opportunity to potentially, uh, press for a veto on that. And SB seven nine, as you know, allows transit agencies to make land use decisions and would allow for apartment buildings on transit routes such as Winchester. Uh, finally, obviously, remaining financially sound is critical. Our city has always been financially sound. And although things are getting very difficult, costs are rising. Most importantly, we must prioritize public safety, city services, and to streamlining and shepherding our tax, our residents' tax dollars well.
Okay, thank you. Ken?
Going last means you, you guys, it's pretty much the same as everybody said, but really, it's about, um, mitigating the threat of wildfires and, and, uh, save, uh, save evacuation routes, addressing the funding of, uh, higher police costs. Uh, and, and talking about finance, so I had a chance to, uh, review the memorandum of internal controls and some of the financials from last year. Look forward to the new financials. Um, and there's some challenges ahead. And, and some of the things you were, you're doing to address that is with the new, uh, HR Financial Service System, and that's really good. So you should be, um, applauded for doing that, because I think that's, was clearly mentioned in the internal review. Um, so that's good, good start. Um, I manage large budgets, my current, um, I manage a thirty-six million dollar budget currently. So I'm very familiar with managing large budgets. Um, and, uh, certainly, you know, with, with, with policing, I understand there's a partial tax initiative. And, um, I look forward to convincing, uh, Montesereno residents, uh, to approve this critical funding to support our police.
Okay, thank you so much. And the last question. What is the most important issue facing Montesereno in our ability to meet the housing element requirements set by the state? What do you feel the city can do to address this? And Bob, you get to start us off, followed by Mark, Liz, Ken, and Genevieve.
Great. I mean, I think the most important issue, uh, around the state housing element is our ability to balance our small-town character and limited land with the state mandate for housing growth. You know, other large cities don't have the, the restrictions or issues that we do around this challenging issue. Um, I think we've been creative with the ability to utilize accessory dwelling units and junior ADUs as a practical, uh, way to maintain neighborhood character while at the same time, you know, achieving some of what, you know, Sacramento was, uh, pushing on us. I think we also need to be a little bit creative, uh, you know, contextually and kind of work with some of the smaller towns throughout the state of California and see both how they're solutioning it as well as potentially working together to push back on the state's mandate. Um, you know, to, to argue that some of this potentially isn't feasible, um, for, you know, towns that are our size. And, you know, I, I mentioned this the last time when we had this conversation. We may find a way to solution this with, you know, something like, um, credits, uh, that we could purchase for, as a town that would absolve us from building within our city limits, but would still help provide affordable housing in adjacent communities and towns and cities such as San Jose. So I think that might be another alternative method. But by being proactive, transparent, and collaborative, I think Montesereno can meet this obligation as well as continue to protect those things that make our city special. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mark?
I wish I had a solution for this. I mean, if this was an easy solution, it would have been solved a long time ago. I, 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 I don't know. I mean, um, there's a gentleman down the street from me who walked up and down our street, talking to everybody, trying to convince him to put an ADU in. He's going to be putting one in, uh, himself. Um, I think that's a great idea. I, I don't know the long-term implications of that. It depends on what the ADU is being used for. If it's just, if, if just putting it in solves the problem, then I think it is a good solution. Um, but, um, it's, it's difficult. I, I really, I, I don't have, I, I think what Bob said in terms of looking at what other small towns are doing is a terrific idea, because when it came to traffic calming, that's exactly what I did. Uh, not only here, but I looked to what we're doing in England, because I went to school in a very small village and they've got traffic calming in there, which was very effective, not only just for the amount of traffic, but it diverted traffic and made it safer for people. But I think that, well, Bob says, looking at other small towns, I mean, why reinvent the wheel? Go and see what they've done. They must have spent a lot of time thinking about it, and I think you can get a lot of, uh, knowledge from that.
Okay, thank you. Liz?
Yes, the most important issue facing Montesereno, uh, in meeting the housing element requirements by, are, by, by the, by the state are lack of available land, obviously, and lack of finances to comply. Uh, you know, it, as you know, it costs several hundred thousand dollars to, uh, to amend, to, to, to produce our housing elements each cycle. And that's not even including the fact that, uh, that the A-bag will often reject our first iterations as they did in the last cycle. I think all fifteen cities in the state of, in the county were non-compliant the first go-around. Um, so it costs small cities like ours a lot of money. Uh, so the, the one-size-fits-all approach does not work. It hurts small cities like ourselves with limited physical and financial resources. And the fact that much of our community is in the wild urban interface makes housing density unacceptable and unsafe. So it's imperative that we find ways to protect our community from such reckless policies. RENA, as you, uh, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, has, has continually failed to produce the housing it was designed to create. So finding, finding a way to, um, mitigate this through, uh, our general plan, through our building guidelines is paramount as we try to adapt to the challenges we face. Uh, local jurisdictions know best how to develop their communities, not the state, and hopefully there is a movement to get back to that.
Okay, thanks very much. And Ken?
Yeah, so I think it's really about balancing, uh, man, state mandates with, um, our community's small-town character and infrastructure. Um, like has been said, we have limited, uh, land, we have no commercial base, and we have residents who deeply value their, uh, unique design of their homes and feel the neighborhoods. So I think it's about being creative, creative strategies, um, engaging residents, often, as I mentioned before, listening and, and engaging. And, and I think a big part of it is also advocacy. I, I, I'm personally manage public policy and advocacy, uh, the state of California for the Old Summer Association. We have a very, very vocal and very active advocacy group. These are volunteers, people from the communities. And I think there's power with, with people, you know, and, and I think that there has to be a way to gather that, uh, that, th- those groups, you know, and engage with them and, um, and ensure that Sacramento understands our needs and the needs of a small town like this, you know, are, are as important as any other city. Um, and so, uh, I think that's, that promotes a realistic pathway to compliance. So I'm a big, big proponent and, uh, very, very involved with, uh, public policy and advocacy.
All right, thank you. And Genevieve?
Again, as a person to go, we're not going to have anything incredibly original to say, but housing is a complex issue that in my, uh, three weeks of preparing, I have not found a concrete solution for. I do think it's important that we not try and make an enemy of Sacramento on this, but that we can try and show them, hey, we're trying to, we're trying to comply with you. It's just we have a lack of funding, we have a lack of land. We are surrounded by lots of other towns and the things that might work for Sacramento or San Jose are not necessarily going to work here. And instead of trying to find ways maybe around the mandate, we could talk with Sacramento and have them help us come up with a solution maybe, or something like that. I just always feel that it's easier to work with people rather than work against them. And in this issue, I feel that could be, uh, a potential way to a solution.
Okay, thank you so much. And that concludes- And that concludes our questions. And I would just like to offer the council, you know, a one, one crack at a follow-up question with any of the candidates, if you wanted one. Does it have to be a question for each candidate? Or one question and all candidates answer the same question?
It would have to be all candidates answer the same question.
I'll go last. Okay. Anybody else? I think you're going first. No one else has questions, though?
No.
Oh. Okay. So this question is, may I ask, too early? So I'd like to know if you are appointed, will you run in the next election for Monastirino? And if you are not appointed, would you run in the next election with Monastirino? So I don't know how you want to deal with that. Okay, so the question is, actually, now that I think about it for a moment, if they are appointed, I'm sure that they will run in the next election. I'm not sure if we'll have more than three candidates for three slots in the next election. But, so if you're not appointed, will you run in the next election, yes or no? Okay, Ken?
Yes.
Okay. Genevieve?
I don't know super much about running in elections, but I'd be looking forward to giving it a go. So yes, I imagine I would run if not appointed.
Okay, thanks. Mark?
No, no, you gotta come up.
It's that this is being recorded.
I get it, I get it. I'm just not. Yes, and I think that that's the right way to do it. I think that people who are going to sit there should be elected. I think this is a great short-term solution, but I don't think it's a long-term solution. I think that elections, elections are the way things should be done.
Yeah, great. The, the question is, if you are not appointed, will you run, yes or no? You're saying yes. Okay, thank you. Okay. And Bob?
Short answer, yes. You know, I joined the site and architecture committee after the last round of this to get more experience with the city and kind of understand a little bit more, as well as I'm taking the leadership of Los Gatos as well. My goal, you know, coming out of the last round of these was essentially to run in twenty, at the end of twenty-six for the twenty-seventh seat. So the answer would be yes, for sure.
Okay, and Liz?
Yes, I would absolutely continue to serve Monastirino the best that I can. And I have to say that I am thrilled to see so many applicants here tonight.
It is good. So just let me verify that I heard correctly. Liz, you're saying that if you are not appointed to city council, you would run in the next city council election. Is that correct?
Anything is possible. Absolutely. I, I actually, I'm serving on site and architecture now. So I will do whatever I can to serve our community.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, so then let's go ahead and we're going to close the questions. And what I'd like to do is open it up for public comment. We've had a number of, of emails sent to us supporting certain candidates. We see that there are folks in the audience that I think want to offer their support to one of the applicants. And Allison, would you like to go first? You were here first.
Okay, sure. I'm also thrilled. There are so many people impressed, impressive group. I'd like, my name's Allison Zeidler. I think I know most of you. Kristin, I loved doing that CPR with you the other day, whoever organized that. That was fabulous. I'd like to speak in favor of Liz Lawler to fill the open council seat. I met Liz shortly after we moved to Monastirino, oh, about seven years ago. She and I went door-to-door in the ADU initiative. And she, to help satisfy our housing element, she understands the issues. She works hard and she's a great communicator. She's served on city council and site and architecture. She was the twenty-twenty-four Citizen of the Year for Monastirino. She's super committed to serving our community and has the experience to be effective in the position. Liz understands the housing laws very well and our needs as a city balancing the various constituencies. She's very knowledgeable about California politics on a macro level and allows her to reach outwards and upwards, connecting with various county and state officials when she needs to, to get the job done. She did this with the evacuation route hardening project on Highway nine and continues to, to work to get the heat lifters reduced for improved evacuation safety. Liz raised her family in Pacific Palisades before moving to Monastirino and has spoken publicly about the wildfire devastation there. She's passionate about wildfire safety and working to improve our community's wildfire resilience. She demonstrates interest in building code updates, asks the right questions about water and firefighting resources, and evacuation route hardening. Liz really impresses me as an individual. She's personable, cares about the residents on an individual level, and also understands the big-picture issues and how to get the best results regionally. Liz continues to work tirelessly to keep Monastirino a wonderful, safe, and beautiful place to call home. And I'm thrilled she's willing to fill the open council seat and ask you to please appoint her. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. I saw another hand up. Come on up.
Well, Allison hit all the great points. I'm also here to recommend Liz Lawler. My name is, hello, city council members and neighbors. My name is Kathy Call and it's an absolute pleasure to recommend Liz Lawler to the city council. I just put together some, something short about Liz as her positive, ongoing involvement in this town speaks for itself. My family moved to Monastirino in nineteen sixty-nine. My husband Bart and myself have been homeowners of Monastirino since nineteen ninety-nine and have known Liz for many years. We've always known her to care deeply about her family, her neighborhood, and has a strong sense of community. We can't think of anyone we would support more in this capacity. I know Monastirino will be very lucky to have Liz Lawler sitting on the town council. Thank you, Kathy and Bart Call.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point, I would like to, there anyone else who wants to speak? Oh, was there? Oh, there was another half, sorry.
Hi, Derek Hillary. You know, I appreciate the longevity of some of the council members and the time that you've put on. As I look at it, I think sometimes there's just a need for new blood and people that maybe have worked in organizations and have worked with the state like Ken appears to have. But maybe we'll bring new ideas and just a different viewpoint in how things are done. Also going to the state. You know, having somebody with, one of the things that Ken said that actually really struck me was the thing about advocacy and advocacy coming from someone that is not a career politician. Okay, that is just somebody that's representing the community. And if I compare the two, I would say that maybe it's more likely that Ken has a, has a voice to be heard that maybe Liz Lawler would not. Given our heavy Democratic position in the state. So I recommend Ken. I think he'd be a great candidate, seems to have a lot of experience and something that'd be really beneficial to the council here.
Okay, thank you so much. Yes, Mark, well, can we, Mark do public comment?
Yes.
You're breaking orange, Mark.
Hey, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to shake.
We're gonna take it up as we go along.
There's nobody who can speak on my behalf, and that's great. There's no worries. But just two cents, I'm impressed with you. Good luck.
Good luck, yeah. Okay. Is there anybody online who wishes to speak about any of the candidates or about anything regarding the candidates?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Okay, Ken, I'm going to bring it back to council now. I was just going to ask the clerk if there are any more emails or any other, that's all.
Yeah.
They were, they were coming in up, up to the last minute here.
What was the timestamp on this one?
This one was two twenty-four, so not at last minute, but.
Yeah, so the last email that was received stated, hello, as a resident of Monastirino, I support Ken's warrant for council member appointment. Resident Tormina. And so copy is this place, yes, this place on, in front of you. Yes, other than that, nothing else has come through.
And all of the other emails were included in the package, okay.
And uploaded on the website. Because we had one come in first batch that came in up until the morning that I posted and sent to you guys. And this is the last email that came through.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. So at this point, I will close the public hearing or the public comment part of the hearing and/or the agenda. And I will now bring it back to council for discussion, questions amongst ourselves or to the, or the staff. And if there aren't any, we will go ahead and commence with a vote to determine the order of nominations.
The ranking.
The ranking, yes.
Can I ask an additional question at this point about the candidates? Can I ask a question of one candidate?
Brad? I would just like to say, before we do any voting or anything, I'd like to thank all the candidates for, for coming here, for spending some time preparing for this. I'd like to thank the people that made public comment and the people that wrote in emails. And I know that there were a number of, of former council members that, that put in comments. And I think those were very valuable. And those are coming from people that have been there, done that, sat at the desk. So, but before, before we vote, I just wanted to, to thank everyone. Because, you know, you invested time and energy, regardless of what the outcome's going to be. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I, I think you said that well, Brad. I think, I've been involved in city politics for more than fifteen years now. And one of the issues we've all been talking about is how to involve more members of the community. And I don't think we've ever had five applications for this. And I, I thought Brian asked a good question of if, as we can only appoint one person tonight, if you're going to run. And this is not in closed shop. And I think that the more people who want to be involved in our city government, it's better for all of us. In a small community, especially since the agri doesn't own, but we're creating one. Getting the word out is, on any issues, difficult. You are all ambassadors. And so I think it's great that you're all here. I think it's great that you all want to stay involved. And I think that whoever is appointed tonight will serve well. And I'm ready to get out of the, the ranking of the nominations.
Okay, Lisa?
So, and, and just to continue that same theme, I know it takes time and energy to do the application process, to think about the answers to your questions, to come here before us and, and speak. So really, thank you to all of you for taking the time and spending the time. And I hope that since there's only one seat available for anyone who does not get nominated, please do consider joining a commission or finding other ways to get involved. I think it will, if you're interested in being on the council and if you don't get chosen today, joining a commission or getting involved in that way could just be a stepping stone to later being on the council. So I would encourage everyone to get involved.
Yeah, and if you're appointed, it does put you in a much higher income tax bracket because of the area, you know, a great compensation you get, but it's worthwhile.
Perfect, yes, one last thing. When we were here, how many weeks ago was this? Weeks ago, Washington, repeat. One of the questions that, that was asked was, would you take leadership Los Gatos? And we had two spots. And both Vice Mayor Allen and Bob both said that they would do that. And they're both, you're taking it, right?
I stepped aside, actually, they were given to me and to Allison. But as I wanted to encourage Bob to get involved in the city, I stepped aside so I could take.
So Allison or?
I'm going to be doing it, yes.
Oh, okay.
It did it in the order that we split the applications. But I, I felt in terms of where Bob is, in terms of his involvement at the city, that it would be more important that he took it than I took it, so.
Well, and, and then following that, we only had, yeah. Okay, thank you, and I commend you for, for doing that. And Allison, well done.
Thank you.
I took that years ago and it was wonderful.
I'm excited about it.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. No, that's okay. All right, so again, I'd like to finish up by, again, thanking all of the candidates and just expressing my happiness that we had a very robust turnout this year. And again, if you don't make it today, this is not the end. I, I can tell you that I'd say most of the city council members that have served did not get on their first time, didn't win their first election, but they joined either site and architecture, Better Streets. In my case, I joined the cultural commission when it was going on back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And eventually learned about the city and, 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 and was able to, to serve a couple of terms. And so if you are interested, I do encourage you because it is a very fulfilling part of your, it, it will become a very fulfilling part of your life.
Yeah, let me add to that, you know, there's not a whole lot that any of us.
Not over yet.
What I was going to say is, there's very little that anybody in this room can do about what happens in Sacramento, much less Washington DC. But this is where we live. And if you just volunteer your time, you could really make a difference. And I, all of you have already commented on things you've done. And as the mayor said, it's really very satisfying when you're able to accomplish something. So stay involved.
Okay, so who is the holder of the ballots?
It's me.
That would be our city manager. We'll look there and color this. Give this back to you, Matt, the city manager. Because we don't have to spell the names, we just have to write down numbers. It doesn't take long.
So what do we do about one missing?
We just do one five, yeah. And, you know, Mike, Brian Jedakis decided to withdraw. But I know that he was a strong applicant and I'd like him to continue to be involved. He's very concerned about advocating for Veterans Memorial. So I didn't, if Mark watched it, or if Mike Jedakis is watching or, you know, whatever, I'd like to thank him for also. Thank you, that's very good. Yeah, Mike's, Mike's volunteered a number of times for different functions around the city.
Yeah, well, I, I want to agree with what Brian said. Having been a reserve officer in the Army for seven years, I, I think there's bound to be, serve in that way, so. The city attorney.
They're going to do it, and I'm going to check their math.
Multi-step process.
First, a lawyer checking math. Two CPAs in the room, gee whiz.
Why do you think I'm bored, so I have my fingers just toeing you?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, thanks.
Or there's time to read a column. I don't, I learned that lesson thirteen years ago.
Wait, was there a story?
We've turned off our, yeah, I just turned off. Yeah, it's just, do you know where is Walter? Uh, yeah, he's in the Ukraine.
In Russia.
We uh
It's just, we're, we're, we got to like, yeah.
And I should find her too.
Since you're paying for it, it's been young. More, more Deloitte, more KPM.
Yeah, Curtis didn't incorporate.
No, should I think she's uh, and I promise not to pull a Steve Harvey even. The two, the grand total should hit, hit sixty if you add it and cross it, add it.
Yeah, now he's just showing off.
Chesa. Okay. Mike's on the book. So, Mike Swan? The order of nominations will be Liz Lawler first, Ken Torren second, Genevieve, oh, wait a second. Bob will be, no, Genevieve is third, Bob is fourth, and Mark is fifth. So at this point, I will look for a motion to appoint Liz Lawler to the city council.
I so move.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Mekachuk?
No.
Councilmember Shannon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor Craig?
No. Okay, uh, can I have a motion for Ken Torren? I'll make a motion for Ken Torren, okay? I'll second that motion, okay? And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shannon?
No.
Councilmember Mekachuk?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, congratulations, Ken. Welcome to the city council. And thank you again, Mark and Genevieve, Bob and Liz. And um, yes, remember Mekachuk? I'd like to once again thank all the candidates and uh, in particular Liz. Um, I am looking forward to your continued involvement and support of the city, uh involvement in, in site and architecture and work, and all the work that you do for the city.
And uh as Bob took my seat on architecture, Bob, I'm personally looking forward to you, you too, outside of architectural. And also I'm sure you'll find leadership Los Gatos, as Brian said, to uh be a very valuable uh uh thing in terms of your involvement in local government.
I'll, I'll second that. Okay, so I will adjourn this meeting and we will reconvene at seven o'clock for our regular council meeting.